Okay, we call the meeting to order.
Carl?
Here.
Charlie?
Yeah.
John? Present. Andy?
Here.
Okay, Stanford Plunge. Five minutes. Interview. But we're not a space of America.
And to the Republican. We're going to stand against one nation under God. Indecisive, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna audit vouchers. You need some help or anything?
What we say. Well, just. It's just a little. Okay. Yeah.
Oh. You need them to put your name here up here. No, I'm here as I was saying, I'm saying like this is.
Yeah. Or ten, they can bring on a shooter.
So you'll get these. Two little critters. Out of the way, I put my name here. Yeah, so are we gonna go through and throw a lot of them, okay?
Sure.
Put together. And then you men. And then place right here, right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We want to.
Then.
Oh, yeah. Go up to that thing. We might have to. It's been in school.
Okay, so now we're gonna pass this. Down to. Down to. My dad, and now it's, they're starting.
Yeah.
Where? Okay. So here's mine. So I'm, I'm the claimant, so I initially done, I guess I'm not by. But. Yes, the real deal. Which one was that one? So.
You sure?
You know.
I was checking that you. Very good. You think you're hard at that. You passed the last. Good. Yeah. You're in a world of dashing. I think.
Here's mine. Now, I. There's posters that we see there's some food there. So you could send.
The receipt.
Yes.
I think we had.
You know, just Charlie's name, so I'm Charlie. I don't know if you have one.
Okay, that's all right, we can take care of that.
Yeah, right, I, I don't.
Yeah. Okay.
We didn't, we didn't. I don't know, it's, I reached.
We didn't vouchers. It's for all. Yeah, we just said, okay, yeah.
Yeah. And then, see, all the rest, so since then, it was just. What about the son sign?
That was the food.
That was really good. I got.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So I thought that I saw.
No, he sacked his antar.
Yeah.
But that's got the receipt with it, we have something.
Right. Yeah, she had antar, we have the receipt. Well, it's just important, I don't want to make sure that. Yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
So Charlie, this is the one, so. And then.
They was that much.
So there's my receipt. Yeah.
You know, it was a quick, it was a quick lot.
Yes. Yeah, I think so. Whether you're your thoughts.
So.
Then, does that save?
Well, you got there. When I, yeah, I put it on. You just had to fill out. Like, yes, you have it. You go, I go, why? He said. Like, oh, he didn't. He didn't.
Yeah.
And he said, look. I believe that's. I don't know. Not telling me. It's under here.
Well.
Yeah.
You would try to.
Yeah, so.
If somebody went, just well, did you drive there? Bang.
Yeah, right. Yeah. I go, captain.
Okay. You're just drunk.
I'm trying to. I just. Two minutes three.
Are you? So, but. Don't you hear is what?
I didn't move.
Change my.
I guess.
Okay, good, I get, I get. But you just quit the train as well. Maybe.
Yeah, they also seen.
They are, okay, so they're already stolen.
You don't.
Okay, I'm.
Yeah, you're sure, isn't, you have marks on you. So.
I want to.
But.
Oh. Yeah.
You're the letter.
But children have a. Make sure the whole water isn't.
I didn't know. So. Yeah.
It's very.
No.
Very sharp.
Yes. Very, especially. Oh, you're correct. We were ready to get it down. Changing the bodies. And people. That would kind of spread you all, you know.
It's just the one of the.
These people sat there.
Oh, really? Thank you guys. Yeah, no, I just. My own. Because when that. So who does, who's.
All right, could I know what such other moves today? Which?
Okay.
So we're. They. Yeah. Becky's, Becky's office was leaking.
Right. I was damn.
So.
Yeah, all you.
That one here in the valley.
Yeah. We were not. I wish.
I was turning the roof off, sir.
Wanted him. Very bad.
Yeah, you get tired sometimes.
Well, there's definitely. Some of them. Both them. Seven, not the most strong.
Yeah. But it's early.
So, yes. And.
We're not. We weren't.
You don't have.
I heard you saw the car. I grew up. Wrong. Here, I can't decide.
They're passing. That's.
I wanted. I didn't. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
But. Um. They're around here. So I'm just trying to. I'm not gonna know if someone tried and I did that. Not a deal with her.
Yeah.
Can't imagine. Somebody can.
Yeah, some point. But. I mean.
But. Lockups, we should have that one more.
That's two for them.
Eight.
Yeah, I missed out. Oh, you did?
I'll double check.
They were stuck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They were there. Oh, yeah. Done.
It's not.
Then some.
Well, you lost that on the first one. That's. Oh, yeah. That's. That was a test. At this point, yeah. She shuts next one. Oh, from there, you know, you're fucking. That's.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah. I'm. I mean. So I feel.
Which.
I don't know. And he is. That's. That. Followed. There's too many cooks and pictures. Because most of them.
Yeah. Right. But that. Oh, she do, yes. They have.
She's only stuck in the. Karen, uh, so. Today for one.
Just the mileage. She's still.
And what you. I didn't see.
I just. Her mileage, she's not, or not mileage.
Oh, my.
Food. I was just entered this. Boy, this year. This is our. This is very far. Fight. With the plan. And they put, and that's they.
How does.
And they want. Yes. It looks. Her kids are. Uh, thirty five.
Nice.
Just so.
That's right.
Didn't want to leave. A child, senior. And when. I want to raise them, play the president. Thank you, God, we're very active boys. And it was nice that I was. We did. We didn't like.
They love.
You know. It knows she's playing. Real good. Yeah, but I, I was just. You know. I don't be working. Nobody said, no, let's do this. Or we have to do, no, she's a crack. She's been around since day one. I think, I think. Even she ain't a good guy. I don't know. She got. No, no, no. It's just something. But I think that's why they had a fight. They're almost like. And they're getting those.
Oh, thank you. But.
We're good. Nice. Yes, we. It's. I was talking about it today and. I said it's the deepest he's ever seen the flowers. Well, I only said we're fine, well. Yeah, I was gonna ask. So. Yeah. Well, because he ordered. So the regular round for silver beaded or. I will put other times. How much is it? I don't. They go. So. But we were talking today about maybe. Seeing what the forecast is. We start. Instead of two, or one to one mix going to. Yeah. It's. But this is like an. Oh, the direct stretch. Yeah. Free area. Yeah. So I won't.
Cash.
I was thinking. Free area. It's all in. Uselves.
Well. Just so.
Well, the state is out. There you.
I'm. I'm just. Going to make sure I'm understanding this. Um, for the interest on the bunch. This is one or just. Why? They'll handle. For. Okay. Want to make sure that's what I thought.
Well, make it. No, just. The mechanics of that, how to get it, or anything, I don't. All right.
This is a.
Stretch.
That's.
I didn't. Don't.
It's.
If I gotta. I'm not. I'm not. I'm not.
Yeah.
He's asking. Hurt. Right. Do I come straight? Yeah.
I'm just thinking the girlfriend.
I believe.
But.
I think.
I think.
Well, I give. I try that one. Don't. Hi. And.
Um. One of the things. It's just.
Yeah.
Nation. It's just to get them.
Right, right.
So. All the work that takes like. To do this.
It's not worth.
But we can't find. Time.
It's just the old. Many.
Yeah, I guess.
Right.
What I've done.
Right.
Because of the. Second. He asked. This is. She will. That's. Now she doesn't. Yeah. So. We've got the receipt attached for. I'm not sure.
You don't want to go.
Well, that's why I'm just. On one of those. I don't know. Yeah. Or we have to read through.
Six. Yeah. I'll see if I can find out more. You. Probably get a. Who you're.
I just wonder. It's so special.
I don't.
I'm running with this. I can. Just because then. So.
Yeah.
This is. So.
The officers.
She was. So, yes, you're an. Yeah.
Nice. Maybe. No, you.
This.
It's one thing.
Well.
Yeah. And. But I didn't. See. I wasn't. You're. Well, just. There's recovery. How much? Pay off. I like. But I don't.
Same.
You gotta.
Yeah. But. You know, I don't know. One of the problems.
General Chris Harris.
Why didn't. Car.
Chris, Chris Harris.
Yeah.
For which one? Oh, yeah. He's for you guys. Yeah, sorry. Somebody in. Should tell. The certain lady. They should. The rest of. Right. Yeah.
Girl singles, this is something.
Okay. I'm with you. I can't tell you.
Okay, but can't be me put out.
I'll.
This is.
You know, I was thinking.
Help me choose.
I can get the road today. There's that park. Your wife. They were. Many family members. It's. There's a. Good. Oh, yeah. Good group. We have.
Then we start again. We're done.
I've been. Doing this. But I can't. Oh, five years. I don't.
This is kind of the end. My. That's been weird. Yeah.
That's where it is. Like, we, I got no paper. I had it over.
Oh.
I got my computer.
Let's just. Oh, computer.
And. Bert and Mo.
Yeah.
All I do. I just. Probably. Fly.
You're not careful. Four nine, David Paul, and I think. They were purchased by another. Some.
Yeah.
I guess it's under. Intended. For looking in. Just.
The word. Going there.
Right. First. Would be. The windshield.
Yeah. Yeah. Four.
Uh, oh, that's where I.
Yeah. The windshield.
Yeah, I wonder, I says. Windshield.
Well, one of the trucks.
One of these.
Yeah.
Oh, was it an accident? Or so.
No. Of a heavy. Side. What was it? Twisted.
We used to.
We used to. Not all. Well. And she. They're. And no longer. So. I'm.
So I said. So if it wasn't an accident, I haven't. No.
Yeah, I know.
But that was. Oh, right. What was that? Like. They are.
Yeah.
Rain, tree, lunch.
Wasn't. Accident. I know. I see, you know, I. We felt. I asked. For that. Because. Yeah. We needed that. Was right. Right.
That's kind of.
Well, see, if they have. Yeah, I haven't. Come into play. I think about. Credit. It was all. And it means. Closer. Check. He would. We would say. He was.
The man. Thanks.
Okay. Last. He said. One guy. With their chair.
No, they're.
Yeah. It's. You know.
Yeah. Yeah, I know what he. All that.
He was a good guy. I don't like.
But we. I didn't know.
Yeah.
Some of them. They're. About.
Yeah. So. Yeah.
Then.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. For. It's six kids. The ones.
They all.
Uh, only one or two. They all play something.
Yeah.
That's not the.
Yeah. Back.
I told. You asked. I'd sort of worked on something, but I.
Right.
So. Who won? Sure. It's. And so. Not so. Thank you. Well, yes. Instead of. If I'm. It's. Oh. Well, oh. Right, right. And I know we had to break it up.
Well, true.
I understand. That's.
We want that. It's like the words. Since we didn't. Winner. They don't get us winner. Yes. Have to be. And so they had to bring out the. You know.
Painted. There's. Before. And you paint. Are we having any issues with these nights or for district two?
I'm just.
Putting on. Time. Do not. They all. Are we having any issues? With the. Jack, I can't. These minutes. I probably. To contact you and pay people for one or just.
Yeah, but we've. We've, they're almost.
They are.
They're.
Is it because it can't get touched in them?
Yeah. So, uh, happens, we haven't started the process, so.
The ones are.
Um, request.
They're just.
Yeah. Right, was it because there's?
Yeah. Right. Interesting, okay, is it wrong? For two.
Yes.
That's the one where the most places and I think they.
That's one where we're missing.
Right, okay.
There were you around there. And one. Two. We should. Oh, okay, yeah, and a couple of them.
There's.
Are you? Yeah, there's people who do this.
Yeah, it's another thing. Scientific.
Yeah, right. Right.
Yeah, that's.
It's gonna take. Couple of years. It's like in a home, these small boats were letting them. I mean, that's. Do it. I got super questions for you. If you do your. All family. I want to make sure you guys. Yeah.
They seem like much more. You change their. I actually was like the devil.
Tim.
Okay.
That's not a little sound.
What's your privilege on the floor? Okay. Uh, department reports. Suzie.
Okay, um. Things been quiet in my office, so we're trying to catch up and. Write some new newspaper articles. But. In terms of the mural committee, can I do that now? I would believe. You've got, I think, the, uh, application. Your mail up, send your mail or?
Yeah, that, you said mural.
Yes. The. Oh, I'm sorry, banners.
I think I maybe that's probably better.
Yes, I'm going, okay.
Definitely.
Yes, yes, we did. So. Just wanna briefly explain it in case someone asks you.
Right.
Thing.
Appreciate that.
Um. This, the work rules for. Being on a banner are different than from being on the monument. And that. You. Had to live in the town of Sterling and some. In some point or live here now, as opposed to the mural. Sorry. The monument where you had to. Live in the town of Sterling when you went into the military.
Right.
So this is loser. But. You can't say my father from Syracuse is in the military, so I'm gonna buy one for him, that's.
Right.
So these rules are made by the committee members.
Okay. Are the rules found out here?
Yes. Uh, the price is two hundred dollars and it's something. They last about three years or so, depending on the winter, which I hate to even mention. But replacements are a hundred thirty-five dollars because the, uh, printer will now have a template. Of the banner picture. That is cited. There's requests like a, uh, hopefully a photo of the military person in uniform, however, the, uh. Printer does have uniforms and has superimposed them on, on people, so. If necessary, he can do that. Also. The older ones, some of the World War Two and all of the World War One, if there are any, are not the color, but he can colorize. As well, so. Uh, this guy is out of. Place near Albany, I believe.
Is, is this, is it the same company that Hannibal?
No, I don't think it is.
Okay.
Here, we looked, um. And discussed some of the mi- uh, banners that are around. In the areas and some of them have way too much information on them, according to people on our committee, and you're going by and you can't see. Two paragraphs worth of stuff about somebody, so we decided to make it simp- as simple as we could. And very bright, obviously. And it will look like this, and I wanted to show you these.
Right.
Um.
Yeah.
Not this guy, he's just a. I don't know where he's from, it says Sterling on top.
Yeah, that's over.
Yep. And I'll just briefly show that. Uh, supposing you live in Fairhaven.
Oh. Yeah, good.
And this one I want to point out, um. If they're a gold star family, you can have a gold star put on, but we'll need a little more information, the committee will need more information. A gold star family means the person died. While. I'm in combat. Okay, if you're.
Can I clarify where the banners are going?
Yes, hold on just one second, I'll finish this. In case you're from Markville.
It was crossing my mind, but I wasn't. More than causing your mind curl.
Oh, yeah, it stopped right there.
Charles been there.
So the printer also said that he could do any of them, uh, we had discussed Sterling Valley and North Sterling as well, and I got into crickets, so we just made it as simple as possible. Uh.
Just the three.
Just the three.
Right.
And it's right on this. Application here, the person can mark which place they want it to be. And then there is, uh, it asks which branch of the military. And, uh. I'm not sure it'll show, but these are all service members, but one that are on the committee, besides Lisa and I that are. Coordinators. But if they've been missing in action or prisoner of war or killed in action. Uh, that would help and especially in identifying gold star families, that's not done so much anymore, but during World War Two especially, it was well-known. Uh. The person, we would like to have, uh. It emailed a possible, because electronics is easier for a printer to work with, if not, they can bring something in and we'll work with that. Uh, the town. Clerk will take the money, the, uh, board will determine. The. If the person is actually eligible. So that's about. The extent of it, we hope to have the. First banners in place by Memorial Day. In the various places. Fairhaven, Mark, Sterling, Markville, we've looked at the number of poles and so on.
Okay.
Gotten permission from our G and E. So all of those things are already in place. Uh, what happens if we get a slew of them? You can put more than one on. Pole, as a matter of fact, one of the people on our committee has one. Near Albany, there's her picture. The father's picture. And her brother's picture, three banners on one pole and it's quite impressive. Uh, any other questions?
Yeah, so, I, it seems, I'm not used to something being this broad when you're telling us about. So the military salutes our brave men and women who are currently serving, or those who have honorably served by creed, and, and again, but from our town or in our.
From our town.
In our town, yep. Okay.
And the committee will determine that, of course, we can talk probably from. The clerk or the historian about. Actually living here.
Right.
I don't. Anticipate problems with that, but we certainly could look into it if there's some question.
Okay.
So we expect that. If some of them are up around Memorial Day and people see them. They're going to say, oh, I wanna do that for my family member or my friend, and so we will continue with this for a while.
So where are the Sterling banners gonna be?
Down through here.
Sterling Center.
Yes, okay. Yes, where there are poles.
Right.
So Suzie just out of curiosity, maybe, maybe it's spelled out in here, but. Who's gonna maintain, say the wind works well or?
Yeah, uh. The, the, uh, highway department will get them up and down for us.
Nice.
Uh. And the Fairhaven, uh, they're not called Highway Department, but. Yes. They will do.
Got it.
How long do they figure they're wrapped?
They last about three years, although they have lasted longer, I know. We're not, we don't know for sure. Um, as a matter of fact, Fairhaven is going to get new flags eventually, and there, there'll be flags that. Are up and down like this instead of the way they are, so they don't. Flap in the wind and tear apart and wrap around the pole, so they're gonna use some of the same brackets as the same gentleman will make those flags. Any other questions?
So.
Very good.
After three years, let's say one needs to be replaced, the cost is a hundred thirty-five dollars.
Right.
There, will there be a mechanism in place to?
It'll probably still be the same thing. I don't know about committee members, you may have to.
Definitely, I guess that's what I'm asking.
Create a new committee or.
Right.
Reactivate.
Right.
Uh, after the time is up. Uh, what's left of that. The banner will go to the family.
Right.
Or if they wind it down after a period of time, that can be done. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But, um. I have. Couple of, uh. Pieces of information for anybody else who wants one, I don't know, Lisa gave me one of these or another one of these, but if you know people that you might think would like one. To fill out, just let me know.
Do you find any, have you heard any resistance to it, or people that?
No.
Military guy saying false first reaction and you're not do- I'm not doing.
No, I haven't heard anything, but I mean, it's choice, so.
Right, it is, except I think it's a way for us to heighten the awareness, especially of the younger folks, that people really have fought in the military.
Right.
And, uh.
And maybe once Paul sees everybody else, like he'll want his up too.
Right, maybe. But I may be doing it in spite of him, just because I.
Okay, fly the night, right? Okay, committee reports, um. I have nothing for STR Committee, don't you have anything for Employee Handbook?
Well, you did share with me that the STR Committee, you've scheduled one for March fourth, you said.
Right.
Right.
But we have nothing that we.
Right, and it sounds like you said they're gonna redo the draft that the town board. Uh, was handed or was.
Hmm.
Uh. Acknowledged that they've received the draft. Uh, the January tenth one that the zoning commission had put together.
Yep.
So, okay, great, and as I said, that would qualify that. Um, and I'd like our conversation today, that draft is the committee, the zoning. Zoning Commission recognized when we turned that in, that there's, it needs some editing.
Yeah, that's precisely.
Right, exactly, okay. Thank you.
Uh, public water.
Employee handbook. You know, I mentioned to Sue and June they were on the employee handbook, so I just.
Oh.
So. That's okay then, that's the one I'm reading on the.
Uh, public water, I do have an update there, uh, for Water District Two. Not this, this past Friday, um. We did get the approval from Department of Health, which, um. We were waiting on. In order to get things going for going out to bid. That approval has been sent to, uh, USDA, uh, who is the funding source. Uh, and they will okay us. We're waiting on their okay to go out to bid, but that should be a shorter process. Um, so the last I spoke to, um, C two A E this week at, um, the conference in New York. Uh, the goal is to be out to bid, um, next, by the end of next week. That's for the water, right, water could. Yeah, that's water town. In the water town, yep. That's what we were waiting on approval for was the water tower.
Andy, just kind of backing up, and I know, harassment prevention. Um, I don't think Sue Leon and June would know that they're on that, and I'm not, I almost think it probably was a copy and paste or cut and paste, because was that intention?
Um.
Yeah, I really.
It's really just a. A mandated thing by the state. But they don't have to, yeah, so we can take.
And I'm just saying, they didn't know.
Okay.
I said, did you know that from the organizational meeting, um, and what, what's the intent, is who is the one that's encouraging that all the employees? And the volunteers, the board members, um, are, are completing the mandatory requirement? Is that a part of this?
Yes.
So is it on this committee? To make sure that the?
Yes.
People, oh, yeah, I don't, I don't, hmm, but I think who used to do that, Lisa, right? Did Lisa say she no longer wanted to?
Yes. We voted on this. Session.
Well, I was still hung up on the zoning commission being, uh, by not sleep, when I just focus on something, but, yeah, so Sue and June don't know that they're on this committee, and I assumed it was just because of reformatting.
They might have been, yeah, they might have been.
Right, so anyway, just kind of put a question mark there, I, I'm not saying take it away, I think that, but if you said to them, okay, it's your responsibility. To, for example, be familiar with, uh, the different processes. Uh, and that we have to encourage the employees to, and the board members, et cetera, to go through this mandatory train, I don't think they would not have.
Okay.
So.
We can address that.
Yeah, okay, so you kind of researched that a little bit?
Yep.
Okay, thanks, maybe a conversation with Lisa.
Okay, um.
Frank Seniors, okay. Uh, that has got the trips, six, uh, six of them all booked, just tomorrow ready to go. You're the last event, I know. They did normally take, right, you don't get done until about two weeks before, before the trip, so she's all set there, and, uh, we've got. Two, oh, I gotta go, go update, I don't know, to Lisa give you a, kind of drop the coffee off.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, I think we have, we have it in here.
Yeah. Uh. And it's going good down around the Auburn area. But. All I can say, we got two events, we, we, the seniors, our, our office for the ages, got two events coming up, and they want me to give you a flyer on this, 'cause I just got this this afternoon. It's, uh, they'll be doing that here.
Do you want us to put this on the board?
Yeah, you can have that, they, they'll probably be sending you a copy anyways, but I just got that this afternoon, and this is, uh, the one for, this is gonna be in Auburn at the Bluefield Manor, but that's a, that's at estate planning. Again, it's really good, there's two lawyers who's gonna do that. And, uh, they're supposed to be real, really good on this subject, you know, so take care of, uh, get things taken care of for you. I asked you what it is, and.
Right.
I've heard too many worse words on that, and now I got this. Uh. This. This is going to go to the governor. And just about every. Office for the Aging and any senior advocacy group has signed this letter. For her to. To take notice on, and it's about money for the seniors, is basically what it is. And then I was broke down and all that, but Brandon wanted me to give you a copy of that.
Okay.
And, uh, now I'll go sit down. Uh, okay, so we got that taken care of, and, uh, the events, we, we still have on Wednesdays, and I'll tell you right now, starting tomorrow afternoon at one o'clock, the Yankees will be on. Doing a spring training game, and it's gonna continue right on until next Thursday, these games ought to run at one o'clock in the afternoon. Uh, next Friday, a week from tomorrow, they'll start at six thirty, for that game, I was like, sorry to let you know, it's like, it's all on the YES Network.
So we can tune in?
Yeah, so we can tune in, okay? And that's about all I got to say right now, if we can think of something else, I'll let you know, okay? And again, I wanna thank the town board for what they do for our seniors. I appreciate it.
Thank you for all you do for the students.
Oh, but I should announce Kathy is our new treasurer.
Ah, congratulations Kathy.
Come on.
Yeah, she doesn't know what she getting into, she gotta work with me, you know?
Yeah. Okay, uh, CEO search, I have posted. The ad. And shared it with the board members, uh, posted on the board, and, uh, we'll be posting it, uh, in the Lake Shore News coming up as well.
I just, I did talk to a gentleman. In the Fairhaven area. Can't remember who was left, who was first name was, but his last name Skinner, went to school in one of Skinner's, anyway, he goes to church down there to Baptist Church in Fairhaven, my brother knows him. We thought he'd be a good candidate to ask anyways, when, he's pretty, pretty busy. On some sort of. Income, he's not allowed to work or make money at it, or whatever.
Right. Okay. All right, can I get a motion to accept the minutes from the January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five regular meetings and public hearing?
I'll make that motion. I'll support you.
Tom?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes. Uh, motion to accept the supervisor's report.
Once we get them.
I thought you said you had yours.
No, I can say.
Oh, I thought she said she had it.
I, I have, not this, I have the one that Pat does for me.
Okay.
The full report. The, did you get?
Yeah. She needs me to have these away.
Oh, okay.
What's that? Well, if, if you have the full report, that's just the top of forty-four.
This is part of, did the other town board members get this?
Okay, here.
Yeah, so we're gonna have.
Yes, and future board members out there?
Yeah, yeah. I think you're old enough. Hi, Dave. There are future board members. I will do you everyone. I'm with Suzie, yeah. Okay.
Oh, I don't know, oh, that's.
We have the world events. Thank you so much.
I'll make you a motion, very exciting, right? I'm sorry, supervisor's.
I'll say that motion.
Tom?
Yes.
Tom?
Yeah.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes. Hey. Correspondence, um. Got the. Email, um, that we're gonna be discussing in the resolutions, I'll cover that now, uh, real quick as to what that was. Um, this is someone who had purchased property and applied for a building permit, uh, because they were never told by the Realtor that it was wetlands. And they paid the fee to the town before they found out that it was wetlands. So she's requesting her money back and will vote in a resolution. Um. My opinion was, we should give the money back.
Should? Is there any law that says that we shouldn't?
There is no law that says that we should, but the Realtor did not notify her when they bought it.
Is that, is a Realtor mandated to disclose that?
Yes.
You're absolutely sure on that?
According to what the attorneys have said. To her and to what Jonathan said, yes.
I would also say, they're safe by the town.
Yes.
If.
I agree.
I mean.
But we have to have the authority to do that.
We do have the authority, we have the authority.
We're doing a prototype, it can be setting a, uh.
Precedent.
Precedent.
I get that. It was an impossibility to. Uh, give her the building permit, we couldn't do it, the way it was. We accepted the money when she applied for the permit, not under, she didn't, she hadn't been notified that it was wetlands and she had already paid it, we notified her that it was public protected wetlands. So, I mean, that is. I, I don't, I think even setting a precedent, that's an okay precedent to set.
Right, I would. So what was our attorney's thought on that? Did Kevin say that, yes, we could, it would make sense to put return?
Returning, returning it's not Kevin's opinion, it's, I mean, we have the right to return the money. It's a fee that was paid to the town.
Right.
That they can't do. They can't build there because it's wet.
I understand that. Um, I, I'm just kind of like drawing from my background or the, the different things about buying big wear and stuff on, it's the buyer's responsibility to research and know what's. What's there, I don't know that it's the Realtors, but that said, that was years ago when I looked into that, so if you're telling me there's some, um.
When you, when you buy a piece of property and when the Realtor is selling a piece of property. It's their responsibility, just like we do with zoning and sewers, I mean, the real, I mean. That it's, it's declared wetland by the state. And therefore it was public knowledge, it was wetland, that should have been disclosed to them, it wasn't disclosed.
Yeah, I would, I'd love that to see that in writing.
I'd hate to catch one of our own Sterling citizens in a gotcha. And it sounds like we're gonna catch this person in a gotcha moment, I, let's give her the money back, three hundred bucks is worth a lot more than her, just to the town of Sterling.
Yeah, it's not about the three hundred dollars, it's about.
I get the precedent, but I don't, I don't understand the precedent that you're arguing for, I mean, just because this. I mean, yes, it sets a precedent that, okay, this person spent. Who knows how much money to buy land in order to build there, came here and applied for the building permit. Not understanding that it was wetlands, paid for the building permit, then finds out that it's wetlands and they can't build. not understanding that it was wetlands, paid for the building permit, then finds out that it's wetlands and they can't build. I mean, why, why would we keep that money? They can't do anything with it and we didn't do it. What, what, what did we do to keep it? We didn't give them a permit.
Yeah, what's her justification? Because they can't.
Earned three hundred bucks.
Yeah.
She made a mistake on the land. She's already been stung by buying land in the first.
Right. Yeah, I mean, she's in battle over the land now.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from. Um, totally get it. I'm just being kind of the devil's advocate on it and saying we're setting a precedent. Um.
I don't think if, if we can't deliver on a building permit, I think our precedent is set. Let's send the money back.
What was Johnson's or CEO's recommendation?
He was okay with giving it back.
Okay. How about the town clerk?
I don't. I didn't ask her.
Right.
But.
She's got a history dealing with fees.
I, I understand that, but I mean, it's the board's discretion. Okay. Um.
Well, we decided to give you.
Well, we'll get to that in the resolution fast. All right, uh, move on to resolutions. Can I get a resolution to enter into executive session to discuss uh, appointment of the town clerk?
I'll make that motion. I'll sit here.
I see.
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Andy, you skipped over there about the ECO three sixty question. Was that one being addressed at all?
We can, I'll.
Okay, okay.
All right. Not a good intention to exit. For a resolution to exit executive.
I'll make that a motion. Thank you.
I'll stop with that. Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes. Okay, before I forget, Joan, we can go back to E codes three sixty. What did you want to discuss?
Well, it says questions must be answered to finish the.
That's what the letter is about, that there's questions that need to be answered.
Who's gonna answer them?
Who's? Whoever's working on E codes three sixty. I'm assuming Jonathan or. The attorney, whoever it sits with. There were some that will be attorney aside. It's just, it, it's just, the letter is stating that the questions need to be answered to finish the process.
Right.
Who would you propose to answer?
Um, because zoning commission, we spent hours going through the parts we could. In fact, I had a conversation with Barb Greatham. The, um, editor. And. She didn't realize that the zoning commission was made up of volunteers. And it's not their professional duty. We don't have a legal background. So that we were deferring a number of the questions to Kevin Cott. What we do, we did that through Lisa Cooper.
Right.
So the zoning commission had been, I don't. I don't have an answer for you. In terms of that, but I think the, my understanding is the expectation is that. Some entity is going to respond to these questions. Or else.
Mm-hmm.
There was. Are you familiar with it?
Yes. Yeah, I know what it is. I'm not, I didn't look at all the questions, but.
Okay.
I'm familiar with what it is.
Right.
Well, I will mark it down and make sure that we. I can, I will be able to tell you who will answer them by the next meeting.
Right. I didn't know the expectation was for the zoning commission. I know it was.
I don't believe it.
Okay.
The last I knew was. All those questions had gone. Uh, between. Jonathan and Kevin. I don't think there's anything outstanding for Jonathan. I don't, I'll follow up and let you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I get a resolution to pay the audit vouchers. I'll make that a motion.
A little second.
Carl?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes. Okay, uh. The, this resolution, I'll discuss this, uh, briefly. The postage machine we have is, uh, getting old. And, um, we've been approached, well, this was a conversation that started with some other towns and, um. Uh, we were approached by EdNet. They are in the business with a similar product that is, um, like Pitney Bowls. And it's a little bit cheaper. There's several other towns, um. That use it in the area. And it's a little cheaper, uh, equipment wise to use, does the same thing. Uh, the service is a little cheaper every month. So, um, with our contract being up on the, uh, Pitney Bowls. This resolution is to authorize the supervisor to sign an agreement with EdNet for a postage meter.
I just have to ask. Do they have a cousin named Eddie? Yeah. We're gonna have a little fun.
Our end cap resolution should authorize Andy to sign it.
I'll second. Carl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yeah, standing.
Yes. All right, resolution to, to accept the retirement of Lisa Cooper as town clerk. And court clerk effective March tenth, two thousand twenty five.
With a heavy heart, I'll make that a resolution. If you need to say.
I know, that's what I'm going.
I will. Let's say again.
Carl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes. Resolution to appoint Tanya Crowning Shield as town clerk effective March tenth, two thousand twenty five.
I think, see, that's it.
I'll make that a resolution.
So, second that.
Carl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Welcome aboard.
You're a raisin bag, right?
Well, we've, we've passed right by. We should also wish her a happy birthday because today's her birthday.
Oh, it's your birthday.
Awesome. Happy birthday to you.
I'm celebrating with all of you.
What are you, twenty now? Wow, you need a life.
Resolution to refund Courtney Phillips her building permit fee of three hundred dollars.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second that.
Carl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
John? I'm gonna abstain because I just want more information before I would add on then. Andy?
Yes. Author, resolution to authorize USDA to place European cherry fruit fly traps on town owned properties. I'll make that a resolution.
You know what, say it.
Carl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes. I'll make a resolution to adjourn the meeting. A little second, that.
All okay.
All right.